We are being recorded, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the work session meeting for the City Council of Minnetrista. Today is December 6th, 2021. And present this evening at the work session are our superintendent Gary Peters, our city clerk, Don Matzko, our city engineer with WSB, Allison Fausky. Council members present are Kathleen Refkin and McGregor, John Temperlin, Pam Mortensen. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And then we have Mike Barone, our city administrator, for the last time. And Brian Grimm, our finance director, David Abel, our community development director, and our chief of police, Paul Falls. So with that, we have a few items here. Are there any, is there anything else? The test well results, okay, we have that. Fingerprinting, is there anything else we have to add? No?
No, it's already there.
Okay, it's already there. So we have a number of items here, three items for the agenda. So we'll get started. We're going to start with our ordinance revision discussion. I think that's David?
He's going to lead it.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This, I think, is a kind of a group effort in terms of your water conservation program that you had recently approved and wanted to move forward with. These specific items have to do with Chapter 5, so hence why my name's on this specific report. Chapter 5 is mostly planning and zoning. They do require public hearings which go before the Planning Commission for recommendation to the council. So with that, there have been some various topics that have been brought up as a result of the drought that we had last year regarding the three items specifically that are listed in your staff report. One being the soil preservation and grading and seeding. Grading sod installation's been brought up as an issue. And then one thing that was brought up through some of these conversations was irrigation from stormwater ponds for new subdivisions and making that a requirement for all new and future subdivisions within the City of Minnetrista. So to follow past practice, what we've done with potential ordinance items is make sure that we have a clear consensus, if you will, from the city council that you do indeed want staff to go ahead and take the time to engage with these items. It's going to be the city engineer and city attorney. It's not always the case. Sometimes it's just the city attorney, but obviously these in nature are going to involve the city engineer as well. And so just looking for some high-level consensus from the council that, yes, indeed, you do want to direct staff to go ahead and start drafting and working on these items. If there's anything that sticks out as a concern or issue that you want to raise now, that now would be the time so we can kind of head in that direction. But I think overall, with these three items, we understand the issues. We know what the problems have been. We know what you've talked about, so I think we kind of know where to go with it. The key here is going to be working with legal and engineering to make sure that they can talk to each other and then, from a practical standpoint, it can be enforced and looked at. So I don't think we need to, unless council wants to, probably don't need to spend a ton of time, like I said, more high-level, making sure we have a consensus and direction from either go ahead and put time and money into these. And what we would then do, if that is the consensus of the council, we would schedule these items as they get complete for most likely Planning Commission meetings and hold public hearings. There is a possibility, if we run into some big questions, we may come back and check with you at a work session, just to make sure we're headed in the right direction. But typically, it goes to the Planning Commission for them to hold the public hearing, and then you would get their recommendations, see that draft ordinance for your ultimate approval. So that's what we're looking at this evening with these three items that we have listed.
Okay.
And just to piggyback a little bit on what David said, the goal of starting with this stuff is we realize there is some time and money that needs to be utilized in order to move these forward if revisions are made to any of these sections. Because there's a time factor involved with these, we wanted to start now because what we're hoping to do as a city is if these do get updated or changed or modified, that we are able to inform builders and developers well enough ahead of time so we don't run into some of the issues like we heard from this year when we were trying to implement the six inches of dirt. And they're saying, "We already ordered the sod," or, you know, that kind of thing. And we're telling them, "You can't lay new sod, it's too hot, too droughty." So the idea is just to get the ground rules set ahead of time, and with your blessing, obviously.
So I know you said high level, so just a couple comments. One, it's somewhere in the ordinance, I think, we should have something that says when, like, what's, when they can lay sod. In other words, we don't want them laying sod in the middle of June or later, or maybe there's a date, you know, because sod takes an enormous amount of water. And so maybe that needs to, we need to think about that.
Well, correct, yeah, that's been brought up already. And the problem with that, we're going to have to figure something out, because as you may recall, and several who were on the council during the Red Oak development, is we had the opposite issue. We had yards that were not receiving sod, and a lot of very upset new homeowners and neighbors that were existing Minnetrista residents that were not happy because there was constant erosion, and the developer was not putting sod down. So we're going to have to figure something out. I understand what you're saying, and so it's going to have to be flexible. I don't think this is going to be able to be a concrete, you can't do sod, I mean, if it's a wet year. Remember, recall, we've had those rains where we've had 100- and 500-year rain events, you know? Obviously, if they want to plant sod, put sod down in June, and we're having one of those years, it's probably not going to be a problem, you know? So I agree, point noted, but I think we're going to have to do some thinking there.
Okay, okay. Oh, and the other thing I was going to say is with the soil, you know, the other thing is, what happens is, it's not just the six inches of soil, but when you're building a house, you're doing construction, you're compacting all that dirt and ground around the house. And so it actually would be a huge benefit if they just decompacted it, you know, and aerated it.
Well, so there's some, again, we're going to have to connect the legal and engineering and practical standpoint with this. But an example that's been given already by the engineer, they do have a compaction test for the top six inches, if you will.
Oh, okay.
There's some things that have been suggested as to what you can do and go around and poke and see what you have, but it's going to be tricky, because, like I said, there's, some of this is, you've got to keep it practical as well. I mean, everyday application of this has to work, so we can certainly look at some things.
And simple, I mean, you don't want to make it too complicated. I don't think we want to get into this, "The soil has to be blah, blah, blah," you know? It has to be something simple.
Right, yeah. We're going to probably have to do some pretty, I wouldn't say drastic, but in terms of processes, we'll probably have to change how we do our COs, our temp COs, and those sorts of things. Right now, that's heavily used to hold up, or to hold up the grading and those sorts of things. We'll probably have to amend our fee schedule and come up with like a grading escrow, to keep it separate from building code. We're going to have to probably amend the contract with WSB, because this is going to, there's going to be a new additional inspection that they're going to do in terms of, not only are they doing the final grade survey review, but now they're looking at the actual dirt and the soil and testing and those sorts of things. That falls under an engineer's purview more than it does.
Can we make it simple so that it's not a huge additional expense? I mean, do you have to do soil testing?
That's a great question. So I would not recommend that you do actual soil testing. Because to test it, to make it meet topsoil standards is, it's, I mean, it's not hugely expensive, but it's, there's an expense to it, and there's a time component to it. I think that we could look at other communities in the watershed district and so on to come up with a definition of what the sod can be laid on top of that has some organic content to promote growth. The testing component that Mr. Abel's referring to is going down and making sure that top six inches is loose enough to support, that it's not just going to run off. And you would want to do it not just at one spot, but do a variety of samples, and if you're hitting bad sample after bad sample, to keep going. And so I think that's something that, it's not, it's not a significant effort, but it does, we do start to kind of creep up a little bit on what all needs to be done out there.
It would be a passive cost, Madam Mayor and council.
Oh, I know, I'm just thinking, yeah, just, and I guess it's also timing. I want to make sure that it's not very time-consuming, that it's not a bottleneck.
No, it'd just be an additional thing that they do when they're doing their final grade survey. It's just something they're not looking for now, that's not part of their current contract. So that's what I mean by that.
Okay.
Does this only relate to sod, or do people seed?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's seeding and sod, right?
Well, yes, I mean, it, yes.
You have to have the six inches of soil, whether you seed or sod.
Yeah, seeding's going to be a little different, obviously. It's not your instant gratification. You've just got to prove what they're looking for is that they're, you can see that they've planted seed, you know?
Okay. And when you say here that it would be a physical impact, can you give us an idea what impact it's going to be for you guys to put this together? I mean, we obviously have to do it, but what's the cost going to be?
It's hard to say, it's a good question. I mean, I wouldn't surprise me to get all three of these done, it's going to exceed $10,000. It wouldn't shock me at all.
And can this be taken out of the water fund?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, with this.
Purposes.
Okay, good question.
Are there concerns about how much income we'll have from water going down then with those ponds being used in more neighborhoods?
Yeah, it's a great question as well. Your revenue's going to come down, obviously, because they're not going to be pumping these many gallons. The, I mean, I guess the short, I mean, I think it'll take a while to see that, just because, you know, Woodley Cove, I guess, has already started this on their own, you know, going from stormwater ponds, so, I mean, that's a potential factor, I would think, definitely.
It'll be interesting, because I thought with our watering ban, our revenue would be under budget for the year. It, yeah, there's enough people adding that cheated sand, so it's going to be over.
Yeah, we see cycles in our revenue from our water usage based on what the weather is, as Brian said, even though we threw a ban out of what up. But, you know, we have wet years, we see dips, you know, so maybe it's not as, we have no idea what this dip would be, but I don't think that's a bad thing, though. I mean, yeah, we want as much money as we can out of this, but to what end, you know? I mean...
But we'll be adding homes, too.
Sure, so, you know, there's a lot of things at play. You're not just changing one variable here.
Well, and I believe as you move through the process, and, you know, the council wants to take a look at down the road, a rate structure change, and then certainly with some of the infrastructure going in, if it's time for utility rate study, to make sure that you're generating enough income with those rates to support, I certainly leave that to Mr. Grimm and all of his expertise, that certainly could be part of the process as well.
Some of that lost revenue, too, will be made up in, you know, less chemicals being used, which are getting more and more expensive, and also power, you know, at the water treatment plants itself. I mean, we've seen a substantial increase in just electricity use at the plant, so, I mean, that'll help factor into some of those cost savings at the plants themselves.
Plus, then the lawns will be getting nutrients.
Versus a treated, filtered water.
But, yeah. And, oh, I just have one more question. On the stormwater ponds, is there any reason we would not want to have them use the ponds? Is there, why wouldn't we ever want to do that?
Well, if it's dry?
Right, I mean, if we have a drought, and, but, see, they're going to end up, what they'll end up doing anyways, they're going to have to drill a well of their own for when drought years come. Because they're going to rely on that, so they're still going to be taking from the aquifer, it's just that we're not treating it, you know, it's not going through our system.
So the association would have to drill their own?
Yeah, 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 the association, well, it's going to cost more for the associations, it's going to cost more for the developers, so it's going to cost more for new residents, ultimately. More maintenance.
In this instance, the well that they would be drilling wouldn't be as deep as the municipal well, so they can go into those shallow drift wells, where they're not concerned about some of the contaminants that we would be as a municipal provider. Similarly, to, you know, to piggyback on some of the concerns on why they would, some of the concerns with pumping down, certainly aesthetics plays into it. If you've had an area inundated for a period of time and it's drawn down for an extended period of time, there's certainly, and, you know, people have some expectations on what a pond will look like, so I think that would factor into it as well.
And you may get with the untreated, you may get people that end up with, you know, rusty-looking concrete dryways and stuff like that, because the iron and钢铁's in them.
Right.
So, that's it.
Okay, and then I had another thought, and now I forgot it. Oh, okay, also, are we going to establish, or when are we going to establish what the watering restrictions are? I know I've talked to Mike about it, and I thought, you know, maybe what we should do is, don't do a ban, you know, right at the beginning, but start out with, right away in the spring, maybe June 1st, or whatever it is, regardless of the rain conditions, we should say odd-even, you know, right away, because then people are used to that. And that's not so restrictive, I mean, that's basically every other day you could water.
That's what we have now, isn't it?
Yeah, so that was the issue when we got into our drought with our water tower dropping. We had the odd-even and the odds and evens. We were working together the other day to draw the water out of our water tower to the point where we almost didn't have fire suppression, so that's why we went to the revised one. But as we found out, people, and Kathleen even backed us up on that, people instead of watering once a day on the two days they got the water, they watered twice a day, which is more than what they are watering if they watered every other day. So the idea, that's, it's going to be in an upcoming meeting, I don't know, I don't have Ally here to say what month is that, Ally, but nonetheless, it's coming up. And so one of the things that we didn't do that I think you should do going forward is, I think we're going to do a red-yellow-green kind of thing. Red is drought, don't water. Green is odd-even, and yellow is what you're going to have to come up with. And what you come up with may be some variation of what we had, but maybe with some different types of hours. You can only water up to 45 minutes on a given day before this time or after this time, instead of the normal timeframes that we have, or something. You're going to have to do some restrictions in addition to the restricted sketch.
Well, we just, I didn't know if that would be part of this, but I think we should, before, you know, April, we should talk about that policy or whatever.
You guys will be talking about this January, February, March, and it's on one of those three months.
Rather than making a decision on the fly, or, you know, when it's, when the water tower is empty.
Well, I think that's scheduled for one of your months coming up, so.
All right, okay. So consensus, we want to do this?
I have a question. Logistically, how is the use, if we require subdivisions to use the stormwater ponds, so they put in a well, how is that tied in, maybe getting down in the dirt?
No problem.
How is that tied into the piping that it hits, that they can water all their lawns? Each of the homeowners is responsible for that, then?
No, well, they'll put in their own system, their own water system, that connects to all the stormwater ponds, and that supplies each of the houses from whatever said pond that you're drawing from. The well will go in right at that, you know, at the pond itself, and there'll be, you know, there'll be a level in which, once it gets, it hits the float, pump kicks on, the well kicks on and starts pumping water into that pond.
Okay, so all the costs incurred with this requirement fall on the shoulders of the residents?
Ultimately, yes, because the developer's going to have to pay to put that infrastructure in, and he's passing that right on down to the new homeowner with each sale.
And the costs are usually roped into your HOA dues, like when the cove has four different groups within the master, so everyone pays different amounts.
Just allocated out?
Yeah.
And then the only other question they have with the wells, they don't need DNR permission to dig those shallower wells, do they?
Well, they'll have to, they'll get a permit from the state that I think they get, they notify the DNR, but if they're not pumping, it depends on how many gallons they're pumping, I think that's the threshold.
There's a restriction on how much they'll be able to pump per year.
Yeah, and I think if you exceed, if you get above a threshold, then you need a permit from the DNR, but I think just for an average residential well, it's just the state.
A state, okay, all right, all right. Go forward.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
And?
Next item is the fingerprint.
Yeah, okay.
This is just a discussion, so chief.
All right, Mayor and council, as you're probably aware, we have been doing civil fingerprinting as well as fingerprinting of criminal cases for many years. We have basically the oldest version of the digital fingerprint machine. There aren't a lot of options, because it has to be compatible with the BCA system, because it operates under their system. So, in other words, what we've been doing is, it's a digital machine, so you can take prints, you know, right then and there if the print is good. If it isn't, you just retake it. If it is, you send it electronically, and you're all done. Part of that machine has not been working the send function for some time, so if we send someone to jail, we just have jail fingerprint them. They do bill us for that. We've been doing that all along with uncooperative suspects, certainly we're not going to drag them in there and make them get their fingerprints if they're not cooperative, but for the vast majority that are, we typically would do the fingerprints that way, since we have the equipment and save that fee, which I believe is about $75 a head. The bigger issue that happened just recently is the, the machine itself just died beyond repair, so it's so old that it cannot be repaired, they won't come out and repair it. Matter of fact, parts are difficult to find, so we're past end-of-life. We've gotten, if this were a car, it would have a million miles on it. So they make much nicer, smaller, more efficient versions of this, but unfortunately, they are expensive. So they're in the neighborhood of $18,000 to $20,000 for the unit. Typically, they will last a very long time, and then there's an ongoing maintenance cost to that, which is about $2,000 or so a year. With that, though, we would be able to resume fingerprinting of everybody, including criminal cases, which we could send directly to the BCA. So we typically do about 75 to 80 civil fingerprints a year, and that number is rising, because I think employers, more and more employers are looking for people to be backgrounded as part of their employment, and so we get a lot of requests for people coming in when they want to adopt a child, or they want to become a teacher, or any one of the other jobs that requires fingerprinting. So they come in and request that we do fingerprints. So currently, we can't do anything other than we can do clay prints, which is kind of like an ink. It works, the problem with it is, people get frustrated because we send them out the door with their prints, they have to physically mail them into the FBI, and oftentimes, some or all of the prints are not usable. So then the resident comes back to us and says, "Hey, these didn't work," and it's, so we've had a few frustrated people, but we have no way of knowing that until they get sent in. So that's not really a good way of doing business. My professional opinion is that we should provide this service, as we have been for a number of years. The criminal piece is very important. We have a backup, certainly we can have jail do it, but not everybody we arrest goes to jail. Matter of fact, more people that get charged don't go to jail than do go to jail. So with that, the purpose of tonight's discussion was basically to see where the council stands on whether or not you're willing to spend about $20,000 to replace that machine. This is not a budgeted item, so I don't have any money in this year or 2022's budget, and I think beyond that would be a long time to wait to replace it. So I guess I just wanted to get your input on that, and we can discuss where to go from here.
When you say go to jail, are you sending them to Hennepin County?
Yes.
So Paul, just one thought, is there any possibility that the crime fund would pay for some of it?
We asked that, go ahead. It's crossed my mind. To be honest, the crime fund is very uncomfortable buying things that, they like to pay for programs, and they like to pay for things like DARE supplies, education safety supplies, electricity, things like that. They really like those types of things, they like programs such as DARE, officer-friendly bike safety, all those types of things. When it comes to physical assets, they're not quite so excited about assisting, and they have purchased some things for us recently. They didn't flat-out say no, but in a roundabout way, they're not really that interested in continuing to buy equipment such as this type of stuff.
I was just thinking if there was like a 50/50 split or something, maybe, you know?
I could certainly ask them, if that's the wish of the council. I know they, I guess I feel a bit like I don't want to ask them, just because I, the last time we were forced to buy gas masks due to the civil unrest, we were kind of under pressure to get the equipment so we could participate, and in turn, receive the service if we were to need it, and I leaned on them for that, and they reluctantly did it, but nonetheless, they did. So if the council wishes, I could certainly ask them if they'd be willing to share in any of that cost.
So it's not budgeted, so where would the money come from if we approve it?
That's a good question.
My payout at the end by... Can I quickly nix that? No, I want...
Mike Barone is going to make it one-time donation.
No severance, no, he's not.
One item we do, we do each year, is we, it used to be a higher amount before budgets got tighter, we had to budget about $15,000 just for general contingency out of the general fund, and that would be, get us most of the way there. Obviously, that sort of uses up your contingency for whenever we get it in 2022, but that would at least be one place to start.
So Paul, you said that we do like 75 to 80 fingerprinting a year?
Yes, that's correct.
Of civil, right, yeah, okay.
And it costs about $75 per fingerprint, per slash, to do fingerprinting? Is that what I heard?
Well, yes and no. So the civil fingerprints, we charge $20 to do that. It doesn't really cost us a whole lot, other than the staff time. Typically, CSOs do the vast majority of that. The $75, that's the, those are the criminal prints that get sent to Hennepin County jail. So that's what they, the cost they pass on to us to do that, because it's an extra step they have to go through during the booking process. If we fingerprint up here, they just book them and send them through the system. They don't fingerprint there. So that's, that was what the $75 is.
So, yeah, I was just figuring, if you do so many a year, it would take, if you did 75, and there's $75 each, it would be three years, and be paid off, kind of that type thing, but it's not that many, because that number of 75 includes civil.
Well, 75 is the number of civil fingerprints. Usually, it's about 75 to 80 per year.
And the criminal ones, how many?
The criminal, that one's a little bit more difficult, because we, we make about between 160 and 185-ish arrests a year, but not all of those go to jail, and I don't have a good number on the exact amount that go to jail. I could find out, but we have to go through, we'd have to pull a bunch of data and have someone physically go through it, even if it's happened, to see.
75 to 100, or something.
Yeah, okay.
All the same as in civil.
I'm sure we send several dozen to jail each year, but I could get an exact number, it would just take me a bit more time.
How many years did the last machine last?
Over 20, probably.
It's, let's see, how long have we had that machine?
I remember when you first got it.
We started with that machine in this building, because we cut the counter out in the booking area, so we've had that machine a very long time.
I would say at least 20 years.
So $1,000 a year.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so that machine did last us a very long time.
And the reason you didn't budget for it?
We just didn't anticipate it. It's a digital machine, it doesn't have a lot of...
You didn't think it was just going to die?
Right, exactly. It doesn't have a lot of moving parts, it has a roller. The new one doesn't even have that, it's just, you just place a hand on there and it scans it.
Are the new machines much improved from the one you had?
Yes, the one we have is a dinosaur.
Is there obsolescence to them, and in that, does the technology change or not?
It does, the new one has better technology, so it's going to be more efficient, it'll be a little bit quicker, you're not going to be required to roll a person's hand for each print.
But it doesn't change probably as quick as when computers first came out, how quickly that stuff?
No, it doesn't, it, yeah, it'll last a lot longer than a squad computer or a desktop or something like that, or even a camera for that matter. This system even comes with a booking camera, because BCA has certain requirements, and you have to meet every one of those, and so there aren't a lot of options. Normally, we would go out for quote on something like this, but this Data Master or Data Works Incorporated is the authorized vendor for the state of Minnesota, so that would be the only one we could buy. vendor for the state of Minnesota. So, that would be the only one we could buy because it has to be compatible with BCA, but...
Well, like Pam said, let's say they book, they send 100 criminal ones downtown and they're billed for it. We're talking 7,500 a year. After two and a half years, it's paid for, so, yeah, all right. And this is, when you are applying for jobs, there is more of a demand to research and background checks?
Yeah, so we're seeing that increase pretty dramatically.
As a convenience to a resident, I think it's something we have to have.
Yeah.
Right, it's a service you've been providing.
A service, right.
And there's also a certain level of professionalism when you can scan a print and tell them right there, you know, they can walk out the door with something they know is going to be accepted versus kind of guessing until someone reviews it.
Right. Sounds good. I think we're on board.
Okay.
All right.
Is that something that you then can put together and bring back?
Yeah.
To a future meeting?
And if you happen to talk to anybody at, do you want me to call Guy Warner and ask him?
Sure.
Oh, I'll give him a call. Thanks.
Yeah, I haven't talked to Guy about this specifically, so.
Okay, I'll ask him. Okay.
But absolutely.
Why not?
It can't hurt.
See, here's the thing. We don't see, I mean, they do a lot. I know that, and they, they're a great organization. But we, as a city, don't see all that they do. So, it'd be nice if we saw a little bit, something that the crime fund would contribute to.
Can we ask Bonnie to help pay for her?
We could ask, but unfortunately, because of their contract, they are not obligated to, unless we add it in next year.
Right, if it was a line item, then they would pay their portion of that.
Yeah, so we might be able to do that next year for the 23 budget, but, okay, go forward.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. So, our next is the test well results discussion and next step. So, after you give your report, I have a report as well that I wanted to share with the council too.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Unfortunately, the test well, when they pumped it, the test well was just east of City Hall here. They pumped it down. And though they hit the aquifer, the production rate was not what is necessary to serve the city. So, they dig down to a certain depth. They were getting around, I think included it in the packet, it was around 265 gallons per minute, somewhere in that neighborhood. And when they go and they project, if they go deeper to what you would dig for a municipal well, it still wouldn't yield that 500 gallons per minute that the city would need. It was going to yield somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 gallons per minute. So, with that, we ceased operation of the test well, didn't pursue that any further. We will not be pursuing test well eight, or pardon me, test well nine. As Greg Johnson indicated, if your one test well is not producing enough, then there's no sense in going after that second one. So, what, the reason I requested to put this on the work session for discussion is so staff could get some direction on alternate sites now to, I guess we would be, well, I guess it is an alternate site semantics, but to look at additional sites for well siting. I included in the packet the graphic that Greg had included in his October presentation showing where the Tunnel City Wanawak is per the geologic atlas, indicated where test well eight is. And we'd be looking at moving further east to try to get into that deeper section of the Wanawak where it would produce, where we're hoping that it has better production than what we're seeing on this tail end of the Wanawak. And so, with that, though, we're asking the council, you know, previously, we had really focused on city-owned facilities, which are marked in yellow here in the packet. The question for council is if they would like to see options for semi-public agencies such as Three Rivers Park District, Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, and then also if there's a desire to look at some potential private land ownership, knowing that our preference will always be publicly owned property. We just want, knowing the timing of this, we'd like to take advantage of the next month here to go and take a look at some of these sites, you know, do, get some background work and come back in January to council with some, some options to consider. Included in the packet were some pictures of a city-owned property that Mr. Peters hadn't gone and taken a look at, and it just, from an access standpoint, that one wasn't, wasn't an option. So, you know, we'd certainly look at each, each, similar to what we did last time, look at each public property, pros and cons, and then move on and so on and so forth if the council wanted us to look at semi-public properties.
So, should I maybe?
Well, did you see, look at the yellow line though, Lisa, before you say?
Yeah, I did. It's, maybe you could, can we blow it up?
Well, the only other thing that maybe is appropriate now is maybe to have David, he's, you can talk a little bit about his conversation he had last week with some of the organizations that Allison just mentioned.
Yeah, I have already reached out actually to Three Rivers Park District, and I had a Zoom meeting this morning with Minnehaha Creek Watershed District just to gauge their willingness to look at this in moving forward. Both are willing to listen. There's no major red flags at first discussion with them. And one, one that I think is gaining more traction than any others at this point would be right next to the entrance to Gale Woods that we just vacated and gave back to them, actually, coincidentally.
Don't you know?
But they have, they have a residential, as you know, that first residential property is three and a half acres that they own, and their caretaker lives on the site. But for a lot of different reasons, that site has the most potential and less red tape, if you will, to get through. And so, there's some willingness, just, you know, with Three Rivers staff, in looking at that site as a potential site, whether that's, whether that's the primary or secondary site. So, that's right now where we've kind of honed our conversations in with Three Rivers Park District. I can maybe pull up the map here just to show you that property.
Well, do they also, and did you have the conversation that if we do, so first of all, we need two wells?
Correct.
And they have to be separated by over 1,000 feet, 1,500 feet. So, I'm not sure that...
So, this is, this is the site?
Right.
Right. So, no, that's correct, Madam Mayor and Council. So, again, just trying to pinpoint with other agencies what they own, what makes sense, what's the easiest. I mean, the idea here with conversations just amongst staff and moving forward is, as you recall, WRA and this triangle piece, we own this piece down here. The issue, I guess, as we talked about WRA the last time it came up, was, I guess I was under the understanding that you would also be looking to put a water treatment plant there, and that's where I think that'd be a problem with WRA. I guess for, maybe Madam Mayor, you can chime in with your opinion on this. I mean, if you were to put the water treatment plant somewhere else, say at City Hall, and you had a well on Three Rivers, you know, a secondary well on Three Rivers site, and potentially your primary well here, all then you need from WRA is an easement for a pipe.
Right.
To me, that's probably something they're much more willing to talk with you about, not a game changer, if you will. The game changer in my mind was if you were going to build a treatment plant there and try to get more land, I think that's where you start opening things up and they get a little more, you know?
Depends on how much money they want or need. No, seriously, I mean, if they are in need, because their buildings are in need of some help, maybe, and whether we put a building there or not, I don't think it's going to make a difference. I mean...
Well, you're going to need more land.
Oh, you think more?
If you're going to build a water treatment plant, you're going to need more land.
I thought we had three acres.
Well, huh? Gary, what?
There's wetland there.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, you're going to have a hard time just with a well.
Yeah, with the well being there, I mean, to fit everything in there, it would be tight.
Okay, all right, got it. Okay.
So, that's an initial thought that, again, with talking with Three Rivers, that seems at this point to have a lot of promise, given, again, how they purchased that. It'd be, it'd be just a board decision of Three Rivers that wouldn't involve any other outside agencies. Some of their other properties, as you know, is funded differently, so it's going to get much more difficult.
Okay.
The Watershed District, just to point out, so they own land on Halsted. This is, this is the property here that they own on Halsted.
Far western border of the Tunnel Walk.
And then, they do also, as you recall, Three Rivers and Minnehaha Creek own these two parcels down here that what we refer to as the Kucha Properties. That's where I kind of focused the conversation today, given it's further east, it's right next to our water line. There's a little bit of hesitancy there, though, because, as you know, they have plans for that, and that's, you're running out of room there as well. But again, they didn't shut the door. They, you know, engineers would have to put their heads together and figure out whether that could work or not. And/or, we've got, but again, Three Rivers and their funding of that, you know, in terms of trying to work with both agencies, you might run into some issues. The other thing to keep in mind that, from my standpoint, if, you know, Watershed District might get a little bit more difficult just from a policy and political standpoint. They're water conservation, you know, so I told them about all the efforts and what we're doing, trying to do in terms of ordinances and conserve water and those sorts of things. But if I put my planning hat on, looked down the future, I think you're likely going to run into more issues with the Watershed District than you are Through Rivers. Three Rivers is also very motivated because of Lake Minnetoka Regional Park, which has the sand bottom pool, which they had to close down last year. And so, they too are interested in the city having adequate water supply and having a need for that. So, they're motivated. They actually got excited about it.
I would say that southern one that you were, the Kucha property, it's too far from waste, from a waste line, from a sewer line.
But we're only putting a well there. We're talking...
Oh, yeah, you could tie into the well. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
We're only talking about a well.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay.
Assuming we put the plant at City Hall still, Kim, the Three Rivers location, we can run the line and everything that we need to do, infrastructure and everything?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate that being an issue because there's public right of way now. We would, it's Hennepin County right of way, so we'd certainly need their permission to do that work. But there's trenchless technologies, which was used the last time a collector pipe was put in along Halsted, where you would have minimal disruption to the roadway or to the surface area.
And then, to get from the West Tonka Regional Park land that we own, we can get from City Hall to there?
Along the same thread, yeah, along the same thread, we would have to take a look at whatever driveway access. So, you'd need a couple of things from West Tonka in this instance. You'd need an easement for a pipe, for the collection, the distribution pipe to get to the water treatment plant, and then also for access too, so that...
Mm-hmm, right. But the treatment plant could be on the Three Rivers Park District location. It wouldn't have to be all the way back here.
No, I don't think so, Madam Mayor. That's not, no, the idea is just, just a well.
Okay, so they wouldn't sell us the property? They would, they, see, it's...
No, no, we'd coexist with a well on the site.
Oh, okay. I see. So, okay, I didn't, I was thinking you'd buy the whole, that whole parcel.
No, they're not, I mean, they're, they want to keep the parcel. They want to keep the home. They want to keep that as an option for their workers.
All right, got it. And that little tiny triangle, that's not big enough, right, for a, for a water treatment?
So, that's got the natural gas line that dissects right through the middle of it?
And Excel power line.
No problem. Let's just go drilling.
So, would we drill a test well, assuming it's all worked out, would we drill the Three Rivers Park site first?
Well, I'm maybe speaking out of turn here, but I guess if, in my opinion, you'd, you'd drill where you have control, and that's the city-owned property on Dubra, R.A., because we don't have to ask permission from anybody to do that or get an agreement in place. We can just simply tell them to go out there and talk to WRA, tell them what we're doing. And it could happen tomorrow if we wanted to. But that's, but again, I guess if you wanted to pursue the other one, we could do that, but we're going to need to get an agreement in place. It's going to take some time, so.
Okay, in light of the fact that $46,000 per test well, which is a huge sum of money, any criteria we can place, like a pre-test test well, I mean, is there anything we can do to try to, try to not use $46,000 again?
And I said they could take those up.
I don't do anything below that.
So, that's a great, that's a great question, and I included that amount in there because as council recalls, when the quote package was set up, it was set up so that if the test well, first test well did not yield, that the second one wouldn't be, wouldn't be dug. Now, yeah, I mean, it's no small amount of money, but I think from, when you look at the grand scheme of your whole water infrastructure system and the history that went along with, you know, for the water tower site to go and find private property and through the negotiation process, it can be very long and monotonous. And it's expensive to acquire property, that that's why we were prioritizing the city-owned property to begin with. And as we move further east, as I mentioned, we get further into that Wanawak aquifer. It gets deeper, and so, there's, there's likelihood that it'll be a better producer than when we're on the fringe.
Okay, so that's the main thing is moving east?
Yeah.
Okay, correct, I guess.
So, I just, I should, so I have to, I should share something with you. So, this afternoon, we had a developer and the residents that are along County Road 110 West. There's like six properties up there. They came last year to the city council asking for a con plan amendment and having the city expand the musa into those, expand it to them. We said no, and now today, I reiterated my opinion. I just said, this is my opinion. I'm not, you know, speaking for the council, but my opinion is that we wouldn't have, that the council wouldn't probably be interested in expanding the musa right now and adding yet more homes to our current water system with the situation that we have. So, however, my thought was, me, and I didn't say this to them, but I'm looking at this and the properties, if you want to point it out, it's on the very eastern side. If they were interested in bringing, having their parcels brought into the musa, we might do a trade-off and say, well, we need, we need a well site, and we need an acre, whatever it is, for a treatment plant, because they, that could be situated right there, right by the white, red, I'm sorry, blue, blue line there, if you, you know, because these properties are kind of there and there and there. That might be...
You kind of, yeah, I mean, you, I didn't realize it was only, because none of Jen's is in that. It's further, you know?
Right, it's further, but...
Because you only got probably one or two properties, owners that were present at that meeting that are on the other side of that line.
Right, you've got one, two, three, I think.
Jen and, that's Hilke right there.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
So, I'm just saying, if, at some point, either now or later, that might be an option because if they're really serious, they might say, okay, we'll donate an acre, whatever, would be a good location, but that might be a...
So, it actually sounds like the best location because it's the furthest east?
Well, I don't know if that's the best.
Well, I think if the council is, has any inkling of considering that option, I think the best thing to do would be for me to take the notes from this meeting, go back to Greg Johnson and say, you know, this wasn't, this area wasn't all included in your original scope, area scope for sites, but here's one of the reasons why council may want to consider looking at this. And is there a benefit of looking at this site versus, you know, for example, the Three Rivers Tonka, West Tonka, two sites? So, you know, they could certainly take a look at that and have that as an option to look at pros and cons, similar to what we did last time. We just didn't want to do that if the council had no interest in looking at private.
And understanding it would be a negotiating tool, and we would then be expanding the musa line. But I made it clear to them that right now, I didn't feel like we could expand it because of our water situation. Because it's, the amount of homes that they were proposing are around 290, 260, 290 homes, and to add them to an already stressed system, I don't think would be a good idea. But if we get two new wells, and...
At no expense on private land, in a better area that Allison helped find out, or Greg will.
But do we know? I mean, is, is it, is it going so far east? Good, like, to me, when I look at this just analytically, I'm like, we're further east, but we're still in the middle, so I like the ones we own, just from not knowing.
No, I do too. I'm just saying.
Versus going, I mean, all we're doing is creating a problem for me on the west boundary to the east boundary, just from not knowing, that's what we need to just find out, is what's our, analytically, what's our best chance of hitting water? Is it more what we got, or is it going all the way?
Well, we must hit water because we have a well, we have well number five, right in South Saunders.
But that's a glacial drift well.
Oh, okay.
That's not into the Tunnel City Wanawak. Anytime, I mean, you drill these walls, it's kind of a crapshoot, so I mean, it's, you know, sometimes you can hit a good spot, some, I mean, it's all depends, I mean, what the aquifer, change of shapes underneath there, so. I mean, you, you could hit one there, and, you know, you can miss it and move over, you know, you know, thousand, fifteen hundred, twenty, two thousand feet, and hit a great pocket. I mean, it's just kind of one of those things where, you know, like I say, we got lucky with our six and seven, we hit perfect spots, and, you know, so I mean, it's just kinda, wherever you want to do it, as I say, it's-
If you had a, if you had a well, like on one of those properties that I was talking about, and on Three Rivers, they would be so close to that water line. I, I don't know, it's just-
Well, and I, and just looking at the note too, and I, I would obviously clarify this with a follow-up discussion with Greg. I think the other, one of the other things they were looking at in generating that area to focus on was proximity to the trunk water main.
Right.
And we start, the further east we go, the further away from the trunk water main we are, but I, I don't know, I don't recall off the top of my head if the, the cross-section started to taper off there. But, again, it's something that could be examined further, if that's something that the council would like to look at as an option.
Let me ask you something. Are we out of the window now? I mean, in terms of getting a test well done?
Well, that's always weather dependent. Certainly today was a very cold day, but it's supposed to warm up again, but we are, I mean, we're heading into winter. I could certainly see what options we have for, you know, doing a test well in the winter. Is there, you know, if there's different material that they can use in the freezing conditions, you know, would be, if there's an additional cost associated with that, but I can get clarification on that as well. We just simply wanted to bring this back to the council, once we knew what happened out there.
See, but I guess to my, to Gary's point of the, the wells are always sort of a crapshoot, for lack of a better term. I guess my recommendation would be start with what we know we can control in the WRA.
WRA.
And then go to the Three Rivers, once David thinks we could get an easement or, or whatever, work with them, and use the far eastern properties as a fallback. Because then all of a sudden, you're commagling issues, you know, I mean, I know there's trade-offs and bartering and stuff in development, but I would, I would start with what we got, you could start tomorrow, almost like someone said, I guess, but.
Good, start in the WRA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I kind of thought that was where we were at anyway in this discussion, that WRA is still a city-owned piece, that's primary number one. And then after that, it becomes partnering with another governmental institution, or, as the mayor talked about, maybe ending up having to talk with a-
An access to it's easy. I drove right to it. I mean, you can drive right, there's a road right there, just got a little bit of transition over to the turf area, but it's right there. You can get to it, it's a nice open area to drill. I mean, it would be a perfect spot for it.
WRA?
WRA, yeah, it's a, it's a perfect spot for it. You can see it on the map, you can see the road that comes right in, and you just, you know, there's a walkway there, you can go right to it, so.
So, since we already signed the contract for two test wells, they've only done one, are we still good with the amount? Because it was a hundred and eight thousand to do the two wells, so I'm assuming they've only spent forty-six thousand. Can they do another two?
That's a good question. I, I mean, certainly, there would be a lot of amendments to that contract because we're changing the location, we're changing the timeframe. It might, it might be a better option to simply quote the package again, but I can certainly touch base with Greg on that and find out what options are. Because I'm just, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that, we may have substantially changed the, the contract, because now, instead of saying, we have, you know, test wells eight and nine, well, we've already tossed out eight, we're not doing nine, it's a different location.
But we don't have to pay the full one oh eight, right, after just the-
That's correct.
Forty-six, okay.
So, if we do test well ten on this one, we'll go with ten. Where would we do test well eleven? Because we do two wells again, right?
Yeah, I think we'd be looking at the Three Rivers Park District. And even if we start looking, you know, if, if something doesn't pan out with Three Rivers, I think the West Tonka area would be, this would be one of the well sites in the future. We just have to take a look at where the second one would come from.
And they, they have to be a minimum of fifteen hundred feet, but they can be further?
I thought it was, was it fifteen hundred?
It's two thousand. It's two thousand feet apart.
Okay, but they, but they can be further apart.
Correct.
Okay.
You just can't be closer because the aquifer, they can interfere with each other.
Okay. So, you'd have to bring a new contract back in January?
That would be my recommendation.
Who negotiates that contract?
Well, you would, you would go out for quotes again, similar to what you did for test wells eight and nine.
So companies are competing against each other for their business.
And those were higher because we only got three responses because of the timeframe, so if we rebid it later, we'll probably get better quotes and more options, I would say.
Correct. I, I think the, the question mark right now is the weather, when, when this work could be done.
It probably won't be done until like March or something, I mean, we're-
Unless we look out with weather, or if there's some alternative method that they can use.
Yeah.
But I can certainly, I mean, the, the reason we wanted to bring it tonight was to get some parameters from council, which you've done a great job giving me the parameters, and then we can come back with an update in January.
Are those far enough away?
It'd be close.
Okay, so, we're gonna go for the West Tonka triangle, the WRA triangle is our well number ten, test well, whatever number it is. And then, and then, in the meantime, we are gonna have to be talking with Three Rivers to see if we can negotiate something on their parcel. Okay? And then that'll come back in January?
Yes, we'll have an update for the council in January.
Okay, okay. Alright, and if that fails, then we move on to the next. Alright. So, I think that, adjourn. Hey, it's almost six thirty, three minutes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, and is there a second? And Ann seconded that, so that Lee made the motion, Ann seconded. All those in favor signify with a aye. All those opposed, motion passes, and we are adjourned for half an hour.